Well, good morning, everyone. It's good to see you this morning. Thanks for joining us. Let's call to order our Jefferson County Board of County Commissioners meeting for July 8th, 2025. I'm Jeffco Commissioner Leslie Dahl Kemper here with Commissioners Zenzinger and Kerr. Our clerk this morning is Ana Zendejas and our host is Elaine Blumquist, who will handle requests for public comment and public testimony sign up in the chat for those of you who are joining us virtually. There are several ways to join our hybrid meeting, all of which are listed on our website at jeffco.us. You are always welcome to reach out to the board via the county's website at jeffco.us or by email at commish@jeffco.us. And we would also like to ask everyone to please go ahead and silence your phones in the hearing room. Next, please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. Next on our agenda is public comment and the board will take up to 15 minutes at the beginning of our meeting and if needed, additional public comment at the end of our meeting on items not listed on the agenda. We will begin with those who've signed up for public comment and right now we have two community members who would like to address the board. For those of you who are joining us virtually, we ask that you please use your computer and send a note in the chat to our host, Ms. Blumquist, with your full name, address, and your topic. When it's your turn to speak, Ms. Blumquist will unmute you. And I'm going to check quickly to see if we have anyone joining us virtually. And we do have one community member, so we'll come to you in just a moment. First up, we have Gary Thiessen. Gary, please come forward. And if you would please share with us your address and you'll have three minutes. Thanks for being here.
It's 7994 West 108th Avenue. I'm here today to continue this public conversation representing my siblings and numerous other county landlords who have testified in opposition to the rezoning of 8567 West 108th Avenue from R2 to I3. I'll read you a letter I delivered to the board commissioners' mailbox on a Friday, 9/27, 10 days after the board's decision to approve the rezoning of the parcel to I3. Good afternoon, this is Gary Tyson representing my sister Glenn Nozawa and other residents about the rezoning case 2410589R2 on West 108th Avenue approved 9/17/2024. I desired to appeal this decision. I have not been able to find anyone in Jefferson County to tell me procedure to the appeal. I would like to document this request because of a concern might be 30-day limit to the appeal and no one can tell me how to do that. The next planning commissioners' meeting, I understand currently, is 10/23/24, more than 30 days after the approval. Please let me know the approval, appeal procedure, so I can execute the proper appeal procedure before the next committee meeting. Also attached is partial list of my public comments. Look forward to reply. I can be reached by email and by phone. And would ask for an update on creation of that appeal. I haven't heard anything back on that. And it's been months. I understand it's too late to appeal this decision. Appreciate advice on what you're doing about creating an appeal process. I was advised by Mr. Lyles, the planning commissioner, to have a community continue to follow up on the resolution of the eight years of zoning violations not acted on by the county and a development plan of the project. I asked zoning inspector about what we need to do to have Mr. Olson erect a fence to stop pollution coming into the neighborhood as testified by six homeowners in opposition to the rezoning in September of '24. I was told by Mr. Olson, I was told Mr. Olson had no requirement to do a fence, and if we wanted a fence, the homeowners would have to do it at their own expense. I asked the commissioners for direction on solving this community issue. In the approval, the only mitigation is to park semi-75 feet from the property line, as testified by the homeowner. One of the homeowners, he has pollution problems 150 feet from the property line. So that's 75 feet will do no good.
Time.
So I'd like to know what my next step is.
Thank you, Mr. Tyson, for being here. Our deputy county manager, Kate Newman, is with us today and I would ask if perhaps she could both connect in the hallway and she can follow up with you. Thank you very much. Kate's right here. Thank you, Kate. Next up, we have Melissa Frint. Please go ahead and share your address with us and you'll have three minutes.
Okay, my address is actually confidential. And my name is Melissa Frint, and I need to provide public notice to the Jefferson County Commissioners. This is in accordance with the USCS Rules of Civil Procedures, as well as Rule 17 and Rule 20 of the United States Supreme Court. The Constitution of the United States has overarching requirements that every state must follow. I don't think that anyone can deny that. The states cannot enact their own alternative legislation substituted for the guarantees of the Constitution of the United States. That would mean that the state laws are more powerful than the Constitution. Clause 1 of Amendment 5 to the United States Constitution says, "No person shall be held to answer for a capital or otherwise infamous crime unless on presentment or grand jury." However, the state of Colorado has enacted its own alternative legislation that permits the prosecuting attorney or police officer to charge by information, not by indictment. That is unconstitutional. An annulment is when you pay a public official to break the law. The Constitution has two areas that enforce this. One is Article 1, Section 10, where it says, "No state shall create any law that shall impair the obligation of contracts." Police officers, prosecutors, judges are all under a contract, a contract performed that's based upon oath or affirmation that they took. The contract parameters are defined within the United States Constitution. When the state enacts a law that directs their agents to disobey the law, the Constitution of the United States, that would be a violation of Article 1, Section 10. Now, the 14th Amendment is the other place you'll find reinforcement of this issue. And that is where it says, "No state shall create or enforce any law that shall abridge the privileges or immunities of the United States citizens." The privileges and immunities of the United States citizens are at a minimum. Those enumerated within the Bill of Rights, the first 10 amendments, they cannot be impaired. Unless the state of Colorado has enacted in its inferior constitution that is permitting public officials in law enforcement whom you pay to violate Constitution of the United States. As a result, there is an inordinate amount of people currently in prison in the state of Colorado illegally and unconstitutionally. Tonawaw Downey is litigating this issue at the United States Supreme Court, and I'm here to notify that if you continue to pay public officials to break the law, there can be serious criminal sanctions that would come from that. We don't want to go that path, but officials need to be made aware that paying people to disobey the law isn't an annulment. It's illegal and it's unconstitutional. I'm asking you, honorable individuals, to please look at Clause 1, Amendment 5, and confirm what I'm saying to be true, and then direct your officials to act lawful constitutional manner, consistent with obligations that are codified in the Constitution of the United States of America. There's still time to do what is right and to repent and to restore what has been broken and hold justice before judgment comes. I have a notice that I would like to put on the record. Thank you and God bless.
Thanks, Ms. Frint, for your comments. Next, we'll go to folks who are joining us online. I understand we have one community member, Mike Rollick, who'd like to address the board. Mr. Rollick, are you on the line?
Yep, that just takes a second to get unmuted. Sorry. Good morning, County Commissioners. My name is Mike Rollick, 1-8735, West 59 Drive, Golden, Colorado, 84403.
Please go ahead. You've got three minutes.
Sounds good. Thanks for having this time for the public to comment. I know I'm kind of a frequent flyer here. First thing I want to do is correct the record. We talked about psilocybin the other day. When I talked about the E. coli process for psilocybin, I did contact Dora. We went back and forth a little bit and they have determined that the E. coli process is not covered under the natural medicine law. However, obviously, everything else would still stand. The idea about having, you know, a thousand-foot buffer from residents, what have you, would be a good idea. Also, there's a ton of laws or rules on the Colorado books regarding HVAC, regarding secure storage of hazardous materials, and on and on and on. So I would hope that Jefferson County can take a look at what Parker has done and also take a look at those rules and be familiar with the state rules because at this point, the state rules might not be familiar to the people who are making the county-level decisions. So that'd be a good thing. But I just want to correct the record. Talking about the wildfire mitigation, very concerned. Obviously, we're moving forward now in Beaver Ranch. We talked about winds. I'm hoping you guys are taking a look at the actual wind studies. We found some new wind modeling software that National Forest Services using. Does not seem like it was used here, but probably should be because you remember, you've got a downward slope towards South Foxton Road and that can be an evacuation route. Looking at the actual contracts, Beaver Ranch was purported to cost about $3,319.50 per acre. So concerning here that this is an actual public project, and what it says here is the $800,000 cost estimate for Jefferson County's Elk Meadows and Beaver Ranch work was derived for the per-keeper contractor expenses on similar Jeffco Open Space fuel reduction projects in Conifer and Evergreen. Per-keeper cost is $3,319. Jeffco is, Jeffco Open Space requesting $203,000 in co-swap funds for Elk Meadows, 147 in co-swap for Beaver Ranch, and then Jeffco Open Space will provide $450,000 in cash match. However, I'm not sure if everyone's aware that when we're looking at the scopes of work, that the contractors who show up on site are allowed to then sell the logs in a manner of their own choosing. We're talking about 100% removal of lodgepole pine, which I've looked up and they're great for, which we call the poles, telephone poles and such. And on the open market, I've seen these things fetch up to $700 or $800 per pole. So it's very concerning that we're taking public land, paying for a private contractor, and now allowing them to take the fuels off. Also regarding HB 251009, citizens, if you implement a program, only have two warnings and about 14 days to remove fuels, yet the burn piles can stay on public lands for up to two years. I would ask that HB 251009 is applied to public land. Thank you so much.
Thanks so much, Mr. Rollick. Ms. Blumquist, excuse me, do we have anyone else joining us virtually who'd like to address the board?
No one online.
All right. Thank you so much. Do we have anyone in the hearing room? Okay, we will then close this portion of public comment. We have another opportunity at the end of our meeting. Next, we have the approval of the minutes dated June 24th and June 26, 2026, 2025. May I have a motion to approve?
I move for the approval of the minutes dated June 24th and June 26, 2025.
Second, Ms. Zendejas, will you please call the vote?
Commissioner Kerr?
Aye.
Commissioner Zenzinger?
Aye.
Commissioner Dahl Kemper?
Yes, and that motion passes. Next, we have six items on the consent agenda. Commissioners, would either of you like to take an item off of consent?
No, thank you.
Okay, great. May I have a motion to approve items 7.1 through 7.6?
I move for the approval of consent agenda items 7.1 through 7.6.
Second, Ms. Zendejas, would you please call the vote?
Commissioner Kerr?
Aye.
Commissioner Zenzinger?
Aye.
Commissioner Dahl Kemper?
Yes, and that motion is approved.
Yes. Madam Chair, I do have a comment very quickly about item 7.5 that we just approved. I did have a conversation recently with an individual that represents Equifax, and I mentioned my surprise at the increase in cost around those contracts and my concern. And they indicated that they had planned to reach out directly to have a conversation with Director Berg or perhaps Mr. Kirby about how they came to that formula and if there are any opportunities in the future for addressing those costs.
Great. Thank you so much, Commissioner Zenzinger. Next is our regular agenda. We have no agenda items on our regular agenda, and we do have one item on our hearing consent agenda. Ms. Zendejas, would you please read hearing consent agenda item 10.1 into the record?
10.1 Resolution CC 25-182, Case Number 25-000235 VA Vacation of Right-Away. Owner: Jefferson County. Applicant: Jefferson County Open Space. Location: Right-Away. Tracks D and E as dedicated by Meadow Brooks Village Subdivision. Approximate area: 1.57 acres. Track D: 1.20 acres. Track E: 0.37 acres. Purpose: To vacate right away. Track D and E in Meadow Brooks Village. Case Manager: Lauren Caracus. Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to remove this item from the consent agenda? All right. And Commissioners, would either of you like to pull this item off of consent?
No, thank you.
Okay. And Ms. Blumquist, is there anyone virtually who would like to remove this item?
No one online.
Okay, thank you so much. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda item 10.1?
I move for the approval of consent agenda item 10.1.
Second. Ms. Zendejas, will you please call the vote?
Commissioner Kerr?
Aye.
Commissioner Zenzinger?
Aye.
Commissioner Dahl Kemper?
Yes, and that motion passes. Next, we'll move to the hearing regular portion of our meeting. We have no items on our hearing regular agenda, and we have next our second round of public comment. Ms. Blumquist, is there anyone online who'd like to address the board?
We have no one online.
All right. Thank you so much. Anyone in the hearing room? Okay, we will close this segment of public comment. Thanks again to the community members who joined us a little bit earlier in the meeting. And before we go to reports, which is our next segment on the agenda, I just want to say on behalf of the board that our thoughts are very much with the Kerr County community and Texas, given the devastating recent floodings that we saw, the loss of life. And we also want to thank and recognize the first responders and community members, neighbors and others who help those in need. Our thoughts are very much with them, and it underscores how critical it is also regarding communication systems for emergencies, the partnership and the collaboration. But most of all, right now, our thoughts are with the loved ones and with those who lost their life in the flooding. So we want to acknowledge them and, and again, our thoughts are with them. So with that, I will turn it over to Commissioner Zenzinger for any report she may have, and then we'll go to Commissioner Kerr and I'll round us out.
Great. Couple of items to mention. We did have a Jefferson Center for Mental Health Board meeting last night. The main topic was the budget proposal for this year, and there was some extensive conversation around the Solteria property and some of the changes fiscally that are happening at the federal level that are having an outsized impact on the budget this year. I also had the opportunity to participate in the Evergreen Celebration on July 3rd, and I just wanted to thank the community and the organizers of that event. It was a lot of fun. Unfortunately, the lightning and the thunder did come around in the end, which affected the balloon glow, but it was a really fun celebration. I also wish to express my gratitude to the Arvada Community Table Food Bank. We had an opportunity to visit the new location, and it was quite impressive. It was really a joint effort between lots of entities, a lot of assistance and support from the city of Arvada. And the new location is going to be able to accommodate a far greater number of people, and it's truly a remarkable sight. So I just wanted to extend my gratitude. And then lastly, I'll round out my comments today. Talking about an opportunity that I had with, in conjunction with our Parks and Open Space Department, to do a South County tour of a number of different parks and trails and open space sites. And I just wanted to extend my gratitude to Tom Hobie and Hillary and Matt for taking me around to various sites. I live in the northern part of the county, so I'm less familiar with some of the sites that we manage in the southern part of the county. It was a really incredible tour. We started off first by talking a little bit about the, and a thing that I didn't know anything about called the Front Range Scenic Preservation Area, which is an effort. It's a multi-county agreement extending from Larimer all the way down to El Paso counties in order to help preserve and maintain the mountain backdrop. And I had no idea that there was an effort that was coordinated in that way. And there have been, it spans 29,302 acres, and it has so far entailed $125 million investment into the preservation of open spaces and in an effort to preserve our scenic landscapes. So that was new information. We also had an opportunity to visit Feringer Ranch, which is just located south of Bear Creek Lake Park, Meyer Ranch, which is out near, right off of Highway 285 near North Turkey Creek Road. We talked, we then traveled up to Beaver Creek Ranch, learned a little bit more about our communication and partnership with the Beaver Ranch Community Incorporated up there. And I was very surprised to learn how popular disc golf courses are in our county. Oh my goodness. People come over from like around the nation to play disc golf in Jefferson County, and I had no idea about that. It kind of eludes me as to why they would want to do that, but I know it is very popular. We also had an opportunity to travel up into the mountains a little bit in the area between Conifer and Evergreen. We went to the Flying Jay Park Ranch Park, as well as I got to observe the construction and the new trailhead improvements that are going in at the Alderford and Three Sisters Park. So that was really fascinating to see the new design elements and the features that they are adopting in order to blend in with the natural landscapes, as well as heightened accessibility and safety. So that was very interesting, as well as the improvements that are happening to the Elk Meadow Park. The Alderford West Trailhead, the construction on that will last through the end of the year. So we don't anticipate that opening until next spring. But the Elk Meadow Park, they are definitely getting closer and closer to finishing the work that is up there. And then lastly, we ended our tour at the former Bergen Meadows Elementary School. Talked about some ideas that are floating around right now with regard to community interest about that elementary school site and some possibilities that we might be willing to entertain. So just want to extend my gratitude to the staff for organizing that tour, and it very much sparked my motivation to make it a quest to visit all 27 parks in Jefferson County, which I did. I kicked it off over the July 4th holiday by taking a hike on South Table Mountain and Crown Hill Park. So wonderful amenities, and we are very, very privileged to be able to live in this community. And I want to thank our staff for all the care that they take.
Great. Thank you so much, Commissioner Zenzinger. Commissioner Kerr?
Thank you. I didn't see you on South Table Mountain. I was up there too at one point over the weekend. But let's see. First of all, I just want to mention that we are taking applications for our many, many boards and commissions, and the deadline for that is July 29. We literally have dozens of boards and commissions to apply for, everything from audit, fairgrounds, airports, equity, diversity, inclusion, planning commission, and many, many more. Really want to reach out to everyone in Jefferson County, especially we would like to reach out to folks who have not served on a board or commission before or haven't really thought of doing that before. It's always great to get new voices on our boards and commissions. So even if you're interested and you have maybe served before, perhaps reaching out to somebody else and letting them know about it would be great. Enjoyed Bike to Work Day. This is what, two Wednesdays, a week and a half ago now, two Wednesdays ago. And I know that we had dozens of folks stop by our Bike to Work Station here at the Jefferson County Government Building, which is the only thing we call this building. And one of the things that they had is a stationary bike with a blender attached to it. So you got to make your own carbon-free smoothie to then power your, the rest of your ride to work or to power the rest of your day. So and other lots of fun games and activities. There were dozens of stations all throughout the metro area. I haven't seen the final numbers, but just judging from the number of folks I saw riding that day, there were hundreds, if not thousands, of people biking to work on this year's Bike to Work Day. Also, as, as we encourage people to take alternative transportation, whether it's to work or shopping or for entertainment or health reasons, you don't have to do it every single day. Start with, with one day a week. Start with one day a month and work up from there to what works for you. And hope to see many, many other folks out there participating in the future. Was able to stop by the Denver Pride Parade. Thousands and thousands of people just really having a good time in community. Was that a weekend or two ago? Yesterday, we, I believe all three of us, along with four of the Adams County Commissioners, plus a number of folks from Arvada City Council, including the mayor, took a tour of the new Community Table Building. Just fantastic. They really put a lot of time, energy, and effort into making this a welcoming place for folks who just either might need ongoing assistance in making sure that they're fed, or for folks who just need that one week, that one month, when things are a little short and they need a little assistance. It's absolutely fantastic that this is a state-of-the-art facility to make sure that folks in our community are getting the nutrition that they need. And it's especially welcoming in the sense that they have beautiful, and I'm not much of an athlete, as I know some, some people are. Do you like how I do? But the artwork they have up is absolutely beautiful and the welcome, there's a child, childcare room for folks who want to come in and do their shopping and let the kids play for a little bit. And then they also have room for folks who would like to get a quick health checkup as well. So just really fantastic new facility there. They've been doing great work for years and decades. I know that we've had folks up here on the dais that have been involved in that over, over the years. So that was a fantastic tour yesterday. Do you want to take this time? I don't think we'll be I don't think we'll be meeting again before our Jeffco Economic Development Corp. Executive Director Jansen Tidmore will be leaving us. And we just want to take, take a little bit of time to thank Jansen for his fantastic work, his presence here over the last, I believe, five, maybe six years that he has been our executive director for the EDC. And he is moving back east to be closer to family. And just really would like to thank him for his time and energy here in Jefferson County. Coming up next, July seventeenth, and I don't think we'll have another hearing before then, but Bayoud Enterprises will be doing a veteran stand-down. And if you'd like more information about that, go to the Bayoud Enterprises website and you can get more information about their July seventeenth stand-down. I'd also like to announce that we have some interns joining us today. So if our three interns in the back could give us a little wave, that'd be great. Thanks for being with us. I believe all three are on summer break from Mullen High School and part of a, a class project to get out and experience your local government. So thanks for being here.
Thanks so much, Commissioner Kerr, appreciate it. Just a quick footnote on the comments from Commissioners Kerr and Zenzinger about Arvada, about Community Table. And it was an incredible tour. But one of the, the, the aspects of the tour that really came home for me, I think, and so many of us, is that the pressure is going to continue to increase on nonprofits like the Community Table and other food banks, other nonprofits that also support our vulnerable neighbors in need with rental assistance and more, especially in light of the federal action that was taken to SNAP, Supplemental Nutritional Assistance Program, which offers food benefits and more to help people who are in need, who are making very difficult choices about whether they're going to buy groceries or they're going to pay rent, whether they're going to buy school supplies or their prescription for medical needs and more. The, these changes are expected to cost Jefferson County residents more than twenty-eight million in benefits. And we also anticipate, according to our Jeffco Human Services Department, lengthier enrollment times and an increased need for emergency food and community support services. SNAP is essential for thirty-eight thousand individuals in Jeffco that provide lifesaving food and nutrition. So when we talk about the important work of these nonprofit organizations, you can see that they have a major impact. And we will continue to stand side by side and support them and support the most vulnerable members of our community in any way that we possibly can. And that's our real strength in Jefferson County is our continued collaboration. On that note, I did also want to mention that Echo, one of our nonprofits in Evergreen, is short on food for its food bank. And I noticed they recently put out a call on social media looking for everything for protein shakes like Ensure, kids healthy snacks, cooking oil, dish soap and toilet paper are particular items that they're running short on. Again, that is for the nonprofit Echo, which is at two-seven-eight-eight-eight Meadow Drive in Evergreen. And if anyone is listening and is able to support or knows of others who might be willing to support, I know that they would appreciate any donation you might be willing to give or helping out any local nonprofit in your community, especially during this, during this time. We are so excited too about the, the new Conifer Library. The, the library staff, as well as the Board of Trustees, had a recent tour of construction that is currently underway for the freestanding library in Conifer. I know the Board of County Commissioners is excited too to take a tour once they're ready to have us to see the new library. It's going to be terrific for the community. And thanks to everyone who has been involved in the progress to date and the progress ahead. Also, special shout out to some of our Jeffco Departments who are also at the Evergreen event that you heard Commissioner Zenzinger talk about. We, we stopped by the Belmar Bash in Lakewood, which was also a, a great event. And then we headed up the hill to Evergreen for Illuminate the Past, which did celebrate the hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary of the mountain community. But a special shout out to David Clark with Congresswoman Pedersen's office, who attended the event, along with other local organizations like the Evergreen Chamber, Jeffco Public Library, Evergreen Park and Rec. It was also great to see our team from the Jeffco Historical Commission, as well as other, many other, you know, many other community partners too. And then I also wanted to mention a little bit more about our recent allocation of opioid funding. And you can learn more at our GatewayToTheRockies.com website. Gateway to the Rockies Opioid Council represents three counties, Clear Creek, Gilpin and Jefferson County. And we launched eight new innovative initiatives and refunded two, I'm sorry, reallocated dollars to two initiatives that were existing and receiving G-Rock dollars. All of these dollars are aimed at addressing the pressing needs of individuals struggling with substance use disorders in our region. And these initiatives are made possible through dedicated funding aimed at prevention, treatment, recovery and harm reduction efforts. And I want to just for a moment, thank our internal team from our Public Affairs Department who helped to raise awareness about the new funding for these different initiatives. Dr. Chelsea Shore, who's our project manager on G-Rock, as well as Jean Biondi and Eric Butler from the County Attorney's Office and Chris Havegood and others who are working with us on the finance side. We are incredibly grateful for your support. We couldn't do this work without you and we're really, really grateful to have your expertise. With that, I'll turn it over to our county manager, Joe Kirby.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you, I do have three updates this morning. I'd like to highlight some things that our county staff is working on. First, we had a number of our child support staff members attend the Colorado Family Support Conference, which is normally held the first week of June. And I would like to highlight that for the second year in a row, we have won the greatest improvement in overall percent of disbursements on hold for 2024. That's a mouthful and I won't go into the details of that metric. But basically, the, the goal is to have a hold rate of under four point two percent. And our rate is less than one percent. So we are far exceeding that metric. So congratulations to our team for that. Also, we had a specific staff member recognized during the conference. Her name is Audrey Slurf and she is one of our Child Support Services staff members. And she received the Outstanding 4D Administrator Award, which goes to the Child Support Program Manager or Administrator that exhibits exceptional enhancements of the Child Support Services Program for 2024. So congratulations to Audrey. One of the statements that was offered in her nomination was that Audrey motivates staff by encouraging a learning environment where no question is a dumb question, allowing mistakes and a failing forward to learn and fostering accountability and responsibility. So congratulations to the Child Support Services Team and specifically Audrey as well. Moving on, we do have a number of opportunities for the public to engage with our staff. We do have our Rocky Mountain Metropolitan Airport Open House that's coming up this week. It's scheduled for July tenth from six to seven-thirty PM. And it's being held at the Omni Interlochen Hotel. This information is all on our website. But what's important about this is this open house is to introduce the community to our newly underway Part 150 Airport Noise and Land Use Compatibility Study. So for those folks who live near or around our airport or have concerns regarding noise and land use, this is your opportunity to come in and meet with our staff. We'll have a number of these open houses over time. But this is the first one that we're kicking off again. It's this Thursday, July tenth from six to seven-thirty PM. And it is an informal drop-in format. So community members don't have to be there at six. You can drop by anytime between six and seven-thirty. Lastly, Commissioners, I wanted to highlight the great work of our Development and Transportation Department. They have recently published the full drafts of our Together Jeffco 2045 Comprehensive Plan and the Transportation and Mobility Plan. Both of those plans are now out for public review. The public does have through July thirtieth to provide feedback. There's a number of ways to provide feedback. First, you can access our TogetherJeffco.com website. And you can participate by giving online feedback or you can attend one of our in-person open houses. We are having open houses in Evergreen, Conifer, Arvada, Golden and Lilton. And the dates and times are listed on our Together Jeffco website. And those opportunities, I believe, start next week, starting out in Arvada on July sixteenth. So this is a really important milestone and we are seeking public feedback on those drafts. And that's all I have for today.
Thanks, Joe, so much for mentioning those open houses. They really are an important opportunity as we get into the final stages of Together Jeffco for the community to weigh in, see how its, its feedback has been incorporated into the planning. I knew I was, I, I just, I wanted also to give a shout out to Kate Newman because Kate, you've been involved in working with Dr. Chelsea Shore Miller in terms of the opioid initiative as well. And thank you so much for your leadership as we navigate this work together. So just a big shout out to Kate Newman as well. And with that, I'll turn it over to our county attorney.
I want to welcome the Mullen interns, having two of our five kids graduate from Mullen. It's nice to see you guys here. Also want to congratulate Ben Rounsburg from our office. He's been a human services attorney for the past, I think, about five years. In my six years here, he will be the third attorney from that team who has been appointed to the bench as a magistrate judge across the hall. So congrats to him on his career progression. He will be a big loss to us, but we're super happy for him.
Great, thanks so much, Kim. We will go ahead and adjourn our meeting and then we'll resume in about ten minutes upstairs for briefings on the fifth floor. Thanks again to everyone who joined us today.